Good morning, meeting's ordered. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and I see we have an addition. Move to approve with the addition.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second to approve the agenda with the addition. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, okay. Any citizens to be heard? Is anybody out there wants to talk about something that's not on the agenda? Very good. Okay, we'll move on. Approval of the minutes of the February fourth meeting.
Move approval.
We have a motion to move the -- to approve the minutes for the February fourth meeting.
Second.
Second by Jenny. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, okay. Payment of bills, we've seen the bills.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay, with that we'll go on to Kathy. You're going to request a fill of vacancy for Director of Finance Administration.
Good morning.
Good morning Kathy.
My Director of Finance is not able to work full-time anymore, so she's going to vacate her position. We have a part-time position, so we'll see if she's willing to take that. That would be a benefit because she's been on for a couple of years now, so she really knows the job well. So, but the full-time position is vacated, so I'm requesting to advertise and hire for that position. It might take a while, because it's a unique position with all the grants that we have, and the public health financing is different than most, so.
I'll move to approve.
Question. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Of course, we're not adding any positions, it's just a fill.
Correct. That's correct.
And if she doesn't take the part-time position, what, is she looking at resigning then, or don't we?
Yeah, she'll look for another job.
Okay. So we're not adding, all right. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is Kristen, you want to do that travel thing, or?
Sure.
Let's move that, take that travel thing now. We got a request to approve our out-of-state travel for Kristen.
Yes, so I brought Corinne Graham with me. She is our full-time adult protection worker, and she can explain a little bit what this training is all about in New York, because she's hoping to go to Maine, right? Yes.
Okay, you're going to the training then?
Yes.
Okay, very good, go ahead.
So, we have a grant with the Elder Justice Network for members of our MDT team to go to New York to observe their MDT team and work with their forensic accountants and take back knowledge that we've worked there, bring it back to our MDT meetings. All expenses paid through the grant.
Okay.
Hard to beat, all expenses paid, I don't want to approve.
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion for grant, second by Jenny. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post.
Thank you.
Georgia trip. Okay Kirk, we'll take you. Kirk can.
Shannon. She's the pilot today.
Hi Shannon.
Passenger here.
Well, that's not true.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, as you know, the recycling has gotten more and more expensive as we've moved along here. Part of the reason is the markets have gone south, the other reason is, is that people are recycling more. One of the things that we have done is we've reimbursed cities for the amount of material and for any recycling that they do. Because of the downturn in the markets and the increase in recycling, we're starting to get limited as far as the budget that we have available to the cities. So what we come to, you, to talk about a little bit today, is a reimbursement policy to the individual cities. This is something that's been going on for quite a while, and Shannon is the one that identified it. And in my group, if you identify a problem, you come up with a solution as well. So she's worked very, very closely with Commissioner Rose, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wayland and Commissioner Campbell, as well as a subcommittee of our solid waste advisory committee to come up with a recommendation. And I'm going to turn it over to her and let her speak a little bit more to that.
What we've done is we've looked at several formulas, and we've looked at many different solutions to our, to our issue. What we've got going on is, the funds for recycling are not increasing right now. I know that the county is looking at talking to the state about getting some of our SCORE money increased through the solid waste tax, and hopefully there will be additional funding through that. But until then, we just don't have additional funding, so we need to put a cap on what we're able to reimburse. And so we looked at what the funding rates have been, and we'd like to sustain that. And what we're asking the board to do is to set that rate for us, so that we can let the cities know that until there is more funding, this is the reimbursement that's available to their city.
Go ahead. Maybe. So the recycling budget, Clay County's total recycling budget is, what's the total, is it 675,000 or something?
I'm sorry, I don't, I, the entire, the entire budget, I don't.
The portion, the portion of it that's reimbursed to communities is?
Well, it's in the $510,000, so.
Pardon me?
It's the $510,000, 6621 is the budget category, and that's for implementation of recycling and composting.
Yeah, but it's those dollars plus the SCORE dollars is the total recycling budget.
Correct, and then, yeah.
So, but the amounts reimbursed to our communities, I think when we total that up for 2019 is about $300 and?
When we, when we totaled 20?
Do you have that?
We went back, I have, I have, yep, if you'd like to.
It might be helpful.
Yeah, look at those. It actually, it came out, we were basing on the 2018 budget?
Yeah.
Of 285, which didn't add up in the end, and so we have, we've had to shuffle a little bit around in the recycling budget to cover, to make sure that nobody loses ground. So this is what we're proposing.
So, so you can see the reimbursement amounts that each community had in 2019. What, the problem without establishing some sort of a maximum is if they qualify for recycling under the previous plan, we paid them, even if, even if it exceeded our budget. And, you know, so that just, you can't do that. And so what we're, what we're asking for here is to, you know, through our committee, is to set the maximum reimbursement for each community, set the maximum at, at the 2019 reimbursements that they did receive. So, so you can see each community here, they can receive up to that amount, provided that they still meet the criteria to receive the recycling benefit. So, so, and right now, there's work being done on even redoing what, what the criteria is that would be allowed, but until then, you're going to operate under?
And I did, we did meet, I did meet with our Sarah Watson, Corinne, our subcommittee member regarding the reimbursable expenses, and we did talk about some changes that we're going to bring to SWAC on Thursday for the reimbursable expenses.
So we also then asked that a letter go out to all the communities, and that, that letter, you have that?
Yep, and I just have one for each of the different cities, so you at least can hit a city.
Yeah, and you need these back then, or are these injured?
Well, these are just, they're not on the letterhead or even yet, so. And these are just examples.
So, in essence, what this letter is going to each community, telling them that they qualify for, and I happen to have Barnesville's here, is that, and it says that they're eligible to receive $39,000. And the whole, the whole point behind that is, we have to protect ourselves from not having somebody, somebody might have qualifying bills that could exceed that, and if we had to pay that, and if every community did that, we would be over budget. And obviously, you know, we've got to make sure that, you know, where would that money come from, so. So this kind of puts all the communities on notice that, you know, we're certainly going to still participate with them in their recycling efforts, but that it cannot exceed those amounts, so.
You know, this is just for 2020, it looks here, but it's this, and it says foreseeable future, so.
Yeah, so Mr. Chairman, I think, you know, what our, what our group in doing this, we didn't want to see any community go backwards from what they had been getting before. That was very important, that no, we wanted nobody to go backwards. So, until there are new recycling dollars brought in, so for example, if we're successful in what we want to do with the SCORE money, if we're successful with that, we would double that SCORE money, which would be an additional hundreds of?
281,000.
181,000, that would be an additional 181,000. So with that 181,000, and then, that's when we would be able to say, okay, what are we going to do with that new money? How are we going to redistribute and help these communities get some of that? But until that's done, I mean, we might have a plan in place to do that, but until it's done.
Do all communities use up their recycling money?
This is based on what they have submitted for, so yes, this, this would be the actual monies reimbursed to the cities in 2019. Those are actual numbers.
The 2019 column is what they submitted and received.
So that's the actual monies that we reimbursed them.
If they would ask for more, do we, do we have more in the fund then?
We don't.
No, that's the problem.
That's the problem, we already had to shuffle.
Just trying to understand.
Yeah, that's the problem, that's why, that's why we want to make sure that each community knows that they're eligible, but only to this maximum level.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Campbell, maybe you could explain the SCORE funding a little bit, because I think that would be? Well, yeah, you know, I think we have talked about that with this board, but, you know, many years ago, the SCORE funding comes from the solid waste management tax, which, that is, they collect, what is it, per ton? It's a percentage on the?
Seventeen percent.
Seventeen percent, and that's on residential waste, and it's even more commercial.
It's nine on residential.
Oh, okay, nine and seven, okay. So anyway, so, back in, several years ago, that, that number, they were collecting 30-some million dollars a year on that, and that, those numbers all was, it was all reimbursed to each county in the state for recycling, based on their formula, which I'm not exactly sure what that is. And then, I think it was during the Polenta administration, that number, they decided that they needed some of that solid waste management tax to solve their general fund problems. So they basically, we basically went from getting 30-some million to 17 million dollars to the, to the counties throughout the state. So, and that, since then, that number hasn't changed. We've been staying at 17 million dollars a year. Into, today, right now, in 2000, it's either 18 or 19, that solid waste management tax collected over 80 million dollars. That goes into the state, and only 17 million of it is. That's why we're having this conversation at, at the county level throughout the state, that we think that more of that should come, and so our first request is just to, is just to get that back to those previous numbers, you know. We're only asking for 30-some million of the 80 million that they're collecting for solid waste. You know, that's what, that's why they, that's why they put the tax in place, so. So that's, that's kind of the little background there, you know, I think that's something that we're, when we go next week to St. Paul, we can be talking to our legislatures about that as well, that's one of our things that we want to be talking about.
So some of these cities, do they have more expenses than this?
They haven't submitted for more expenses, no. And there will be, in a couple of cases, there will be expenses that we may not reimburse for any longer.
Well, a really good example of that would be, Dilworth just implemented their, you know, their curbside recycling, single-sort recycling. Well, they're, they're not going to get any additional money for that, but in the same respect, when Moorhead went single-sort, they didn't get any additional money either. You know, they were, Moorhead was fortunate enough to get the grants to buy the bins and those types of things, and I don't know how Dilworth, if they were able to get any grants, but, you know, so, I mean, we're maxed out on what we can give. So this, so the 421, 300 in the 2020 reimbursement, that isn't the total recycling, but we also have county recycling costs that, that we need to keep some of those down for ourselves. You know, there's, there's expenses that we have, so.
So who sets the standards, what you're going to apply for?
As far as the, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, as far as the reimbursement?
Yeah.
We, we as the county establish what's eligible.
Well, that's going through the solid waste committee right now. The solid waste advisory committee.
Our solid waste advisory committee set up a subcommittee to review this portion of it, and then also then to, to look at what, what should qualify for submitting for reimbursement. I think that list is outdated, and includes some things that shouldn't be included anymore, so the whole idea is going to be to simplify it. Some of it might have to do with driving distance and some other, you know, I don't know exactly what that'll be, but I think there, I know you've met on that, and I think there, there may be some.
Yeah, and we did come up with a fairly simple, just direct costs, rather than covering city functions that relate to, so, answering phones, for example.
You know, I, you know, to give you another example, Commissioner Rose, I think there was one community that was looking at wanting to, to construct some more, I don't know, was it fencing, or another building, or whatever? There's a, Mr. Chairman, one, one of the communities was looking to put some siding on. Yeah, so, so they wanted to put some siding on a, you know, and if they, you know, and I think we should allow that to be part of, of an eligible expense, but it still has to come out of that ceiling. But it's up to the community how they want it, how they want to spend it, as long as it's not a qualifying expense. So, I think that's the, the issue that we're dealing with.
Okay, so this is just makes them aware of what they can, how much they can expect.
What is in the fund, and it'll be nice for the cities to know that. And it was nice, I was able to respond to, they needed siding in a, in a door, and they're able to budget then for what, what they can do.
Well, see, the amounts didn't change that much from 2019 to 2020.
It was just basically.
No, I admire changes, so.
And again, that, and that was, that was the intent, was we, we didn't feel that any community should go backwards.
No.
And that, so, we just want, that, we use that as our starting point. When we get some new money, then we'll have to, we'll have to come up with what criteria we should be using to, to do that.
Okay, very good.
And Mr. Chairman, the whole idea behind this was, we had asked Shannon to prepare then a letter to go out to each community, letting them know that this is, this is our budget plan for the year 2020, and this is what they qualify for, and, and we're looking for this board's approval to send those letters.
Okay, Jenny?
Frank, and, and, thank you. In terms of the new funding, the SCORE request, is that something that we should individually be doing, like at the legislative conference next week?
Yeah.
But even higher up, that should be something that the Environment Natural Resources Policy Group, it seems like a statewide issue, that we should start discussing in terms of a platform position.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I agree with you. You know, obviously, we're going to be talking to some folks when we're down there. You know, I think that we talked to some folks also about trying to get together as far as the AMC platform. Unbeknownst to y'all, we are going to be meeting with the staff person at Kevin's request, breakfast on the, let's see, it's the 26th, and they will be there to talk about the SFC funding. That's not, that's not in conflict with our MCIT. No, that's the next day.
Okay.
I think I have extension that morning, but.
So, Commissioner, you know, there's, this is being worked on on quite a few fronts right now. Certainly, we've been working with our solid waste managers and their, and their group through AMC to deal with this. I know, what's his name? Zach, he's the president of that right now. We've had these discussions at Prairie Lake Solid Waste, they're all supportive of this. And I think what we're looking for is some united message from all counties that, that can go out regarding that SCORE. At our last joint powers meeting, we also brought this in the morning with the cities, we brought that up, and the cities are very interested. So, you know, it can go a lot further, because obviously if there's more SCORE fundings, the cities also benefit from that. So, we're also looking for cities to help get involved with seeing that. We did meet with, can't remember who was there, Matt and I were there, and you guys were there, and we met with, Steve, we met with Ben Lean and Kent.
Mark Gordon.
And we, individually with Mark Gordon. And they agree that the first step should be to get those funds transferred back into the environmental, so that, so you're right on the money there in terms of what, where that would be helpful to come from the AMC platform, too, would be the environmental committee, to get those dollars back in there.
Do we have any idea how much was turned down, qualifying events, that was turned down?
We reimbursed everything that they asked for.
Okay, so nobody?
But, Mr. Chairman, I think it's important to remember that their costs are going to be going up here in the future. And again, it's because the, the value of the market and also the cost of actually doing business. I just want to point out one other thing in regard to the SCORE funding. There are two bills that are in the legislature right now, one in the House and one in the Senate, and it has quite a bit of broad support from the legislative authors. It's not a new issue, I mean, this is my, I think this might be my fifth rodeo up here in Clay County, but it's probably, this issue's been around for 20 years, trying to get something done. I think the difference now is because of the pressure of the market and the issue as far as single-sort, people have gone to single-sort, the costs have gone up significantly higher, and so I think it's going to get a lot more input from the counties and the cities at this point in time. You know, it's, it's, you can kind of compare this to, you know, if the, if they establish a solid waste management tax, you would think that it should go for solid waste management. You know, can you imagine the uproar of the, of all the residents in this state if they were to decide that they want to take some of our gas tax and remove it and put it in the general fund? It wouldn't, that wouldn't fly. But because this is a smaller entity, it seems like it's okay for them to do this, and I'm not blaming either side, but I think they, they need to, if they're going to have a tax that's related to a service, then that service should benefit from the revenue.
Okay.
Well, I would, you know, Mr. Chairman, I would move that, that we establish the reimbursement maximum rates as presented for the year 2020, and that the, the letters go to each community explaining that process.
Second. Okay, we have a motion from Kevin, the second by Graham, to approve the rates. Any further discussion?
I may also suggest that we be prepared to discuss this at our small cities meeting.
Very good idea, okay. Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Post, motion passes.
So it means I need to be at the small city?
But you have.
That was your in mic, yeah.
Shannon, thank you for your work on this.
Good work.
Thank you for your help, I very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we go to the two fleet vehicles. Georgia wasn't able to make it here today, so Steve is handling that.
Morning, Mr. Chair, I pinch hint here this morning. Georgia has two vehicles, both 2012 Dodge Grand Caravan, and a 2012 Ford Fusion that she's looking to replace with 2020 inversions. The deadline for state contract is actually Thursday, and so her, her hope is that through approval that she can get those ordered and onboard. As you can see, there's a list on the back of the number of miles, both vehicles have over 100,000 miles. Sounds like they've been experiencing some, some different issues in cost and maintaining, and so we will be looking to, to put those, replace those, and, and purchase the new vehicles.
Just a note, that's usually when I find them.
Yeah, I was going to say, these are all under the mileage of my cars.
I'll move to approve for the two vehicles. Second. We have a motion and a second, you know, I guess, caution would be that if the contract ends at Thursday, we're pretty cut and we're pretty close.
I'd like to weigh it.
Yes.
So, okay, any further discussion on that?
I bring this up every time we purchase vehicles, and I, I see that we have a Ford of giving quote, and we've done business with lots of other entities, but I, there are dealers in town, and so what will, between the sheriff's department and fleet vehicles, what will it take for us to approach the local dealers and say, is there a barrier between getting the state contract? What is that? Because all of us at this table would much rather.
Sure.
And it's, we're not going to solve it today, but I, for five years I've said, bring it in closer to the businesses.
I agree with that, and, and are we looking through the Lakes Country Service Co-op to is purchasing?
We have, I don't believe that we have.
For fleets, they think they do an awful lot in that, or, I, I agree that it seems to me that.
After our last purchase, I did reach out to, to a local, local business, and I did not get a response, but I can certainly do that again.
I mean, and it, it could be that there are barriers to getting that, I mean, the state contract could be cost prohibitive, but I would sleep better if this said.
You know, and, and it might be too, yeah, who knows, they, they might have to honor that state contract, or everybody in the state too, and maybe they, I don't know what their, each business reasoning behind it, but some certainly do it. I agree, if we could get it local, it'd be great.
But what happens if, say we go by Thursday, what happens, do we have a new contract then, or?
Then, then, I think the 2021's come out, and so there's a waiting period until those vehicles are, are available, so they wouldn't give them order until end of this year.
Okay.
We should check with the Lakes Country and see what they're, I mean, we've got the approval on this one.
Okay, we've got a motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, motion passes. Now we go on, David, with the Highway Department, David and Justin.
Morning, good morning.
We got, first thing we're going to go through is deficient bridge prioritization resolution.
Right, we did this November 12th, since then, we've got a couple more bridges we want to add to it. They've got to be on this list in order to approach the state for township funds, bridge bond funding, so just by getting on the list is one of the very first steps, amongst other things, you know, with the township structures, you've got to meet with the townships and get their buy-in and make sure they're willing to pay for the, the small portion that they're responsible for. And so we, we did have four structures we'd like to add to this. We'll talk a little bit more at Highway Committee meeting about some of these structures with the watershed, little project that they proposed with us, it looks like a pretty good deal for both parties, as well as a really good deal for the townships, so we'd like to get approval on the township and the county, there's two resolutions. One has strictly county road and county state highways, and the other one's strictly just township structures.
I know some of them are eliminated now, what does that mean, the bridge is gone, or is, it doesn't need to be replaced, or?
Yeah, correct, the plan is to eliminate the bridge and just put it like a turnaround or barrier up there. Those don't, I mean, that's our proposed plan on there, we could take that off, but we've been doing it the same way for 20 years or so, but if there's very low volume, if they're going, it lives on a road, and it's just, you know, the, the state does really push for eliminations if you can, you know, they don't want to have a bridge system that has bridges every mile. Clay County is a little unique, because we do have so many roads, so many mile roads, and they haven't really given us a lot of pushback on that, but I think there was a few years back when they, when they, you know, we all know how bridge bonding works, and, and last year we didn't get any money for bridge bonding, some of these things. So they're trying to keep the system so it isn't so overloaded, but I know they kind of, they like to see if they can, you know, if we can find bridges to eliminate, but that's what that means, Frank, that we would, those are estimated as if we can eliminate, and to get a bridge removed from a township, they're not very willing to do that, a lot of times, because you know, there's a lot of people that do need to use them and get around, but if the, if the distance by elimination's only a mile or two, that's where we start negotiating and trying to work with the money.
You say it's tough to get them eliminated, they wouldn't talk these over with the townships then.
Right, that's the part that's kind of tough. I've, I've had some meetings years ago with Homewood Township, and there's a little bridge right east of Saban that they really don't want to lose, so we, you know, if that's the case, we get a lot of pushback. You know, we also don't have unlimited funds in the town bridge funding source. You know, we also don't have unlimited funds in the town bridge funding source, and we got thirty townships that all have structures, so, you know, you try to share that, so in order to, if you did a full blown bridge, it would be upwards of five hundred thousand or more, while that could be five other structures for some other townships, so to try to be equitable within our, with our bridge system in Clay County.
Okay.
So what we usually do is, if, if we can kind of limp it along, maybe post it down a little bit, so at least, you know, maybe cars and lighter loads can go through there and extend the life as long as we can. I guess that's kind of what we've been doing.
Okay.
Dave, when you, when you come to us after we have already prioritized, or, or these bridges, certainly they're added if the, if the bridge bonding funds are there, and then there's the cooperation with the other entity involved with it. What happens if the bridge bonding is less than, doing these projects, then how do we prioritize? And would something like this be bumped up ahead of what we had previously authorized, or how does that, how would that work?
I guess if, the projects that we added for this go-around will not change any other priorities. The funding sources, most of them are town, town bridge funds, and we're sitting pretty good on town bridge funds. If, if something doesn't go, I guess everything usually just kind of goes back the next year. That's kind of the way we've done it. Like last year, we didn't do any, I think County Road Two, County Road One, and County Road Twelve are all on here, and we've had those on the shelf for a couple of years, but we just don't have funds for them.
Yeah, and that, and that's my point. If we don't, you know, if we get some funds, but it isn't enough to do all of these...
Right.
How, how would these newly added ones prioritize with the ones that were on there before these were added?
I think we, I should bring them to Highway Committee and then back to the board. I would make a recommendation, see if...
Yeah, okay. I, and I understand, I understand that there can be certain instances where, you know, a new project comes up, and there's, there can be other funding that's added to it that, that makes, makes it logical to move it up. I, you know, I get that, so, you know, I guess just so that we're aware of that. I, I see here where there's something that might have to do with watershed projects that are going on, and if there's a lot of extra money that would, that's going into, that would, otherwise not, I mean, the watershed money's still our money, you know, but...
Yep. So I think what's, what's going on down there is they've got some concrete pipes that are pulling apart, and they're, that sucks the water out of the road, and you have a hole in the road. Our guys go out there with the motor grader, and they kind of patch it together, so there's a history of that kind of going on. It's to a point where we got maintenance issues and safety issues. I think there is really concern about some triggerbeat trucks that were taking the corner there with this hole in the road, and it's to a point where it's got to get done, and then this cooperation between the ditch system and the county and township road systems can work together. A lot of the, a lot of the things that we would do would be taken care of by the watershed ones. As I said, we'll get into that after this meeting with the Highway Committee and potentially bring more information back to the board at that time, too.
Okay. Okay, well, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we add the four structures to the twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-four, five-year bridge deficit resolution.
Second motion.
Okay, then motion, second, any further discussion? Is this just on the resolution number ten and eleven, or?
There's a township one.
Yeah, they're both, yeah. Yeah, they're on one motion, okay. This was resolution number ten and eleven.
Yes.
Am I right on that?
That's, yeah, it's just approval.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Okay. Okay, then you got the mill and overlay.
Right, we've been waiting anxiously to get to the board to get approval for advertising. We want to get our projects going. We've got a lot of, a lot of federal aid projects coming up. We've got these, what's called Rose Projects, it's bridges on, off system, so it's federally bridge funds. We've got six of those, and it's little, little bridge replacements with culverts, and they're at the federal review level. We've also got some federal aid money on County Road Fourteen. That's the little road that goes kind of south of Glendon by the Glendon Bee Piler. We've got federally dollars for some shoulder paving that we're going to also add some county dollars for mill and overlay, and that's in federal aid review. We've got a grading job on County Road One, which is north Oakport there, and that's at, in the right-of-way process, we've got the Praiser hired, and he's meeting with landowners. So, anyway, we finally do have a project that we're going to move forward here and move to letting. It's our mill and overlay on County Road Thirty-three. If you remember, this is one of the projects that did garner a lot of public input over the years. When we'd have our five-year construction program meetings, the locals up in this area would come in and express their interest and concern on the road, so...
Does that work?
It is, yep. Starts kind of by the bus barn there on the north edge of town and goes up to twenty-six, so about six and a half miles. And it's got the drop shoulders on there, so we're going to mill the twenty-four feet off and then raise the whole thing up, so we won't have that little drop on there anymore. So we'd like to get permission to advertise on that one, and letting date of April seventh.
We'll definitely make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, Jenny's second by Kevin. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All in the passes.
Great. Thank you. I think talking to our other guys, we had three, four inches of summer, so maybe a little more in the north part of the county, but I know they were out yesterday a little bit, too, and doing what they can to kind of keep up, I guess, so.
Must have done all right, I didn't get any calls.
Yeah, I know they're, they're winging today, trying to push things back.
Push things back.
We're hoping this weekend, maybe we'll get a little more melt again, try to draw some of that down.
Get some of that ice off, some of those...
Right, exactly. I did also get a call on Eightieth, Eightieth Avenue South, just a little bit east of Trunk Highway Seventy-five where the railroad tracks comes in, oftentimes right out of the track level there, you get a little bit of a bump there, because the trains are coming through, and there are vehicles, I think you remember last run?
My dad high centered it.
Right, the same exact thing on County Road Eight. Anyway, we sent the guy out there yesterday with the motor grader as well, scraped that down, because there was a vehicle that got stuck on the tracks again, and it's very frightening, so we'll have our guys kind of keep an eye on that. It's always that road, that, that train.
Yeah, that track.
That track on Twenty-eighth Avenue there, so...
Very good.
Thanks.
Seen a little bit of, that's the highway track, all right?
Yep.
Okay. Sir, did you have something, or did you want to...
State unit.
Very good. Glad to have a big audience like that, okay. Okay, from that, we're going to committee, Ford, Grant, you want to start us out today?
Uh, let's see, I just had, we had the Yellow Ribbon meeting last week, and had reports from the various organizations that work with the Yellow Ribbon, the VA, and that type of thing, and then discussions on things we need to do to raise some funds for the Yellow Ribbon. And then we had a meeting with Kirk and Shannon about what we discussed today last, last week, so I think that was gone over and decision made, so that's, hopefully will all work out. That was it for me.
Jenny?
Thank you. Last week, I attended the Soil and Water Conservation District meeting. We had a PowerPoint on the Buffalo Reds, One Watershed One Plan, the local board talking points. They are in the process of attending lots of different meetings. Gabe will be doing a presentation on March eleventh on the county's pesticide use programs at the Cass Clay Food Commission, and, let's see, we also, Lynn's also been in talks with the diversion authority in terms of identifying possible locations for mitigation efforts, so I appreciate that they're reaching out to him, because those guys really know where the water problems may be existing. And then we, I'd had some conversation about the opportunity funds, the local spraying allocation that we'd done with the local, the state managed for that. There's some confusion on how that was working, and so we talked a little bit about that, and they set the rototiller rental rate for the tree program, and last week was Tree Week, so we have a little bit more time to do that. And then Saturday, I attended Pheasant Fest, and that was part of a program panel discussing challenges and opportunities for local lands, public lands. I felt it went really well. It was a good opportunity specifically to sit down with the DNR and Pheasant Forever and US Fishing Game to, to talk about what we're seeing at the local level. That concludes my report.
I thought Tony was on the radio, too. I think it was last week, a week before, something like that, I heard him on the radio. He's got his own programs for Soil and Water.
Kevin? Okay, last Tuesday, we did meet with, as Commissioner Waylon mentioned, we did meet with solid waste regarding the recycling funding that we talked about today. Then on Thursday, we had a Lakes Country Service Cooperative meeting in Forest Falls. We did go over a few budget amendments that needed to be done, nothing really earth-shattering or other ordinary, but just to get the budget to recognize there were some changes being done during the course of the year. And we, we did get a legislative update, now the legislature's in session, there's some, some different things that they're looking to see happen legislatively, and I have a brochure on that, and we can maybe be discussing some of those things. Most of them are education-related. That concludes my report.
Okay, I've had no meetings. Steve, tell us about your vacation, or any other thing you did.
Well, I'd like to thank the board for the time off last week. I did, would have just touched, a week, two weeks ago, most of my meetings, I'm sure, were covered during your reports last week, but we did have a Strive for Excellence on the sixth, where we talked about our Leadership Academy that we brought forth as board. That Leadership Academy does start on Wednesday, tomorrow, and so, we also had County Management that day, where we talked about master planning, intergovernmental review, and the, and the Leadership Academy. I would note that the, the state is going to continue with preparing our area for, to be used for the magistrate room, and so they are going to be here today at noon, so if there's anything on your desks that you want to put someplace else while they're, they're working, that would, would be good. So that concludes my report.
Okay. Any further, Russ, clean?
Yep.
Okay, we're adjourned.